Welcome, everyone, and we'd like to call to order the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners meeting. First, we'll be led in prayer by Commissioner Turner. Then, our pledge to the flag will be by Commissioner Allen.
Let's pray. Heavenly Father, it is good to be here again tonight. We are thankful for this opportunity that you've afforded each one of us. Just ask that you be with the individuals that we serve with, Commissioner Schaefer and his recovery, and Commissioner Cook and former Commissioner Farley, as they deal with some medical issues. Just ask that you be with them and the doctors. Commissioner Gurley and his recovery as well. A lot of things going on during the holiday season. We're thankful that we're citizens of a country that gives us so many freedoms and opportunities to be able to share these good times together and enjoy living in a community such as Rutherford County. Ask that you give us guidance tonight as we handle the people's business. May we do it with honor that recognizes you and makes our citizens proud of who we are as their elected officials. I ask all these things in the name of Jesus. Amen.
(Inaudible) (Inaudible)
Madame Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Schaefer.
Here.
Commissioner Piercy.
Here.
Commissioner Jordan.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Cook.
Here.
Commissioner Jernigan.
Here.
Commissioner Kusch.
Present.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner Gurley.
Here.
Commissioner Turner.
Here.
Commissioner Allen.
Here.
Commissioner Stevens.
Here.
Commissioner Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Baum.
Here.
Commissioner Nipper.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Commissioner Phillips.
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner Ely.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Serenio.
Yes.
We have a quorum, 21 present.
Thank you very much. All right, you have received a copy of the minutes. Do we have a motion concerning the minutes? Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. We have a very minor typographical area on page 39, item M, under Other Business. It's in the second paragraph. It says Captain William Kusch, and it should say Captain Jeff Kusch. And we've already mentioned it to Mr. Spence, and he's taken care of that. Other than that minor change, I've reviewed those minutes. I find them to be in order. Move that we dispense with the reading and that they be approved.
Second, to Mr. Kusch. All right, thank you very much. Any other corrections or additions? If not all of you in favor of that with that one typographical correction, please say aye. Any opposed? Thank you very much. Okay. Now, we have a time for public comments, and we've had three people to request an opportunity to do that, so we'd invite you to come forward, give us your name and address, and then make your comments, and I will remind each of you that we have three minutes allowed for that purpose. So first is a lady named Suzanne Sullivan. Is Ms. Sullivan here and available to make her comments? Okay, I don't see her here present, so we'll move on then. Mr. D.C., Daniel.
D.C. stands for Doris Caldwell, but I've always been known as Jim because my grandfather didn't know that, and nobody wanted to tell. So, I live at 1407 Wall Street here in Murfreesboro. I want to take just the time available to talk about the fact that the deadline for notice to the county attorney and the firm is going to run out the end of this year. If you don't notify them of any proposed termination by then, then it will automatically roll for another four years. Now, that's really just not the focus of my talk, but I wanted to make sure that is planted in the backs of our minds. I went to the meetings of the Ethics Committee and the Steering Committee, and there are some proposals that Mr. McCrary and the mayor have talked about to change the legal services agreement. And I would urge you to set a deadline and give notice so that you will be preserved for six months to work something out. It appears to me from review of the legal services agreement that the question of conflict of interest is not adequately dealt with. Things keep popping up, and one of the problems, I do not blame the attorneys or the county, but one of the problems is that there are so many clients of the law firm that there's an endless potential for conflicts of interest. That has to be dealt with. Also, there are other kinds of problems. For instance, Rhonda Allen had to sit out the Ethics Committee meeting because she had been represented in preparing some instruments, I understand. And those kinds of things can keep popping up. Nobody wants to interfere with proper business, but we're concerned about the structure, particularly the clients listed amount to about 41, only one of which is Rutherford County itself, and another one is the school board, if you look on the website. Now, anytime you're dealing with this, you've got problems because no man can serve two masters, and no law firm can serve two either without setting up a Chinese wall that will protect itself. So the fundamental question here is what can be done to prevent conflicts as the time goes on? I don't know how much of my time I've used. Was that being the three minutes? Okay. Thank you very much.
Next is Mr. Ron Williams.
Good to see all y'all tonight. My name's Ron Williams. I live at 1109 Versales Road in Rockville, and I too want to talk to you about the legal services agreement. I've got about eight or 10 issues with it, but I'm going to talk about two real quick. In my opinion, the legal service agreement should not be renewed because if you renew it in the way that it is, the next group of people that are coming in, you mayor and everybody else, will not have an opportunity during their whole tenure to address this or do anything. However, if you took the opportunity to extend it one year instead of it ending in the June of '18, extend it to June of '19, whoever in your group would come in would have an opportunity to look at it, and if they wanted to approve it on for four years or whatever, then that could happen, and then it would be on a path as not to approve something for a whole group that was coming in that may want to do something different. Secondly, in the legal services agreement, Section 5B, and I'll read this, "The county attorney and associates shall provide at their expense professional liability insurance, subject to its availability." I don't understand why it's subject to availability; they should just provide it. Then it goes on to say, "The county attorney and associates shall be entitled to be represented, defended, and have liability claims against them paid for by Rutherford County," which means all of us taxpayers. That clause in there, I believe, is a problem and should be addressed in some fashion. Steering Committee should look at this. I know the other day, I mean, what this means is if they make a mistake, the taxpayers have to pay for it if it gets sued, and that's not right to the taxpayers. I know the other day in steering, Commissioner Stevens pointed out something that was in there, and his statement was he'd rather put something in there, an error on the part where we couldn't be sued as a part that was in there that could. If that part had stayed in there, we could be sued, the law firm could be sued, the taxpayers would have to pay for it. Under what my understanding of the professional people, people that are professionals may not hold themselves harmless of liability when they're dealing a service important to the public. So I just wish that y'all would look at that and get a better clarification for that. Thank you.
Now, we're ready then to move on into elections and confirmations. Commissioner Turner.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. Commissioners, you'll find on your iPad a list of notaries that we need to approve, and Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for their approval.
Second, Commissioner Phillips and others. Anyone have a need to add some? Mr. Reed.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to add one more to this list in the Iggleville area, Melissa Weaver.
Melissa Weaver. Do we have to have a second on that, Mr. Turner, or is that?
I could second it.
Okay, you'll second it.
Yes, sir.
All of you in favor of adding Ms. Weaver, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, now, we do have a motion in a second then to elect these notaries, and without objection then, we're ready to vote. All of you in favor of that then, please say aye.
Aye.
All right, any opposed? Thank you.
Steering, we need to fill one alternate vacancy on the beer board to expire in October of 2020. Steering nominates Mr. Leslie Smith. Mr. Chairman, I make a motion for his approval.
Mr. Phillips, please. All right, we have the steering's recommendation and nomination. Is there anyone else that wishes to present anyone for that position? If not, then you're ready to vote. All of you in favor of that then, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you.
Steering, we'd like to announce one alternate vacancy on the beer board set to expire in October of 2019. Steering would like to announce four vacancies on the Agriculture Committee, two commissioners, being Will Jordan and Robert P., one farmer, Colin Miller, and one farm woman, Phyllis Ferguson. Steering would like to announce two vacancies on the Correctional Work Center Board to replace Robert Asbury and Frances Mosby. Steering would like to announce one vacancy on Public Building Authority, Mike Picklesimer, and Steering would like to announce one vacancy on the Insurance Committee for the employee representative, Joe Hafner. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner Turner. Okay, next we have on the agenda the resolution to approve the consent agenda, and we'll call on Commissioner Phillips.
Thank you, Mayor Burgess. I reviewed the consent agenda, found all those items, and agree that they all are appropriate, and move to approve the consent agenda.
And a second from Commissioner Jordan. Now, does anyone have any one of these that they would like to move to the regular agenda? Hey, I don't see anyone suggesting that, so therefore, please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Okay, record the votes, please.
Twenty-one yes. Motion passes.
Thank you. We do not have any unfinished business. We will then start on our reports by the standing committees, and the first one we have is Budget, Finance, and Investment Committee, Commissioner Jordan.
I want to recognize we've got three ex-commissioners in the audience tonight. We've got Mr. Mike Woods, who served back in the '80s, Mr. Daniels has already spoken, and Mr. Williams. I'd like to say welcome to all three of them. Good to see them back in the audience. We've got a special purpose fund budget amendment, Resolution K-1A. Be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that the special purpose fund be amended as follows. Sheriff's Office, decrease restricted fund balance $55,000, increase expenditures for confidential $30,000, and other capital outlay $25,000. This is funds for the fencing around the building we've hired for the drug enforcement officers. Resolved this 16th day of November 2017. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And a second, Commissioner Schaefer and Mr. Piercy. Any questions or discussion? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Cook is not in her seat. Mr. Kusch.
All right, so that's everyone that's present.
All right then, please record the votes.
Twenty yes. Motion passes.
I'm K-1B. We've got a resolution authorizing the lease of Smyrna Rutherford County Airport property to the Industrial Development Board, and authorizing up to $46 million in industrial revenue bonds by the Industrial Development Board. I will make a note that there is no taxpayer liability on this. This is just the county, just a conduit for the financing on this, but there's no liability, no taxpayer dollars involved whatsoever. Resolution, whereas the Industrial Development Board of Rutherford County is authorized under the provision of Chapter 53, Title VII of Tennessee Code, agitated, as amended from time to time as the Act, to, among other things, issue, sell, and deliver revenue bonds and revenue notes, and to use proceeds therefrom for, among other things, the purpose of financing, acquiring, improving, constructing, expanding, equipping, owning, leasing, and disposing of properties in order to promote industry, trade, commerce, tourism, and recreation, and therefore maintain and increase employment opportunities, and further the use of natural resources in the state of Tennessee by inducing manufacturing, industrial, governmental, educational, financial, service, commercial, and recreational enterprises to locate in or remain in the state of Tennessee. And there are about four more whereas and thereofs that go on through there, and this is resolved this 17th day of November 2017. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
And who is that? Mr. Chantel and Mr. Kusch, any questions? Any discussion? All right, then, that's easy. Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
Record the votes, please.
Twenty yes. Motion passes.
I'm K-1C. Resolution for additional funding for Segal High School addition and related general purpose school fund amendment. Resolution, whereas there is a plan for and construct, let me start, there's a plan, there's a need to plan for and construct schools due to growth in the area, and whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners previously funded the Segal High addition in an amount of $6,060,000 in March of 2017, and whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education desires to proceed with the low bid contract and also include alternate I to the contract, which is an additional $1,440,000 for a total project of $7,500,000. And whereas the Rutherford County Board of Education desires to internally fund the alternate I cost with a transfer from the general purpose school fund until a future bond issue can be authorized, and these transferred funds would become available for future kindergarten through sixth grade projects. Therefore, be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that funding for alternate I to the construction contract for Segal High addition in the amount of $1,440,000 be authorized and funded from a future bond issue, and alternate I be currently internally funded with a transfer from the general purpose school fund, and additionally that the general purpose school fund be amended as follows. Decrease unassigned fund balance $1,440,000. Increase expenditures transferred to other funds $1,440,000. Resolved this 16th day of November 2017. Mr. Chairman, I so move.
Commissioner Allen, second. Any discussion, questions? All right then, you're ready to vote? Please cast your votes.
Anyone that did not vote and wishes to vote, or anyone who would like to change your vote, you may do so now.
All right, please record the votes.
Twenty yes. Motion passes.
All right, thank you. All right, we'll continue on with our agenda, and we'll come back to the public hearings. There is not a report from Health and Ed Committee, neither the Property Management Committee, or Public Safety, or Public Works, or Steering. That finishes all of the normal agenda, and we're seven or eight minutes away from 6:30 on these normal time for our public hearings. So we'll entertain any other business or announcements you want to make before we get to that. Commissioner Pete.
Now that you mention it, there is a ham breakfast at the Ketchum that's coming Saturday from 6 to 10. That'll be on the 18th, and want to invite everybody out. Thanks.
Commissioner Allen.
I have a couple of things I want to mention. First of all, I just want to clarify something that was mentioned in the public comment section. Mr. Daniels misspoke that I had to recuse myself from the Ethics Committee meeting. There was no regulation, rule, law, anything requiring me to recuse myself. I did so as a courtesy to the Rutherford Neighborhood Alliance, since I didn't want, since they'd made an ethics complaint, I didn't want there to appear to be any favoritism since I had done personal work with the county attorney's office. So they're aware of that. They know that's the reason why I did that, so I just wanted to clarify that. The other thing is, on Sunday, December 3rd, Smyrna's hosting their Christmas parade at 2:00 p.m. You have until November 22nd. If your group or club wants to register, you need to contact the town, the city hall, and you can get your application there. Also, we're hosting Santa at the depot again this year. That'll be on Saturday, December 9th. From 2:00 until 8:00 p.m., we're going to have an artisan market, and so there's two different locations for that. They'll both be in buildings on Front Street. One will be in the Assembly Hall, the other will be in the Carpe Artista Academy. But then at 5:00, Santa Claus is going to arrive. We'll have carriage rides. There'll be, you know, a lot of fun things going on. We've always done the smores and the fire pits and things like that in the past. There are few fees, small fees, from maybe some food items and the carriage rides, but for the most part, many things that are available that night are free. So Santa comes at 5:00, artisan market starts at 2:00, and that'll all be going on from 2:00 to 8:00.
Commissioner Gurley.
Yes, I'd like to remind everyone that the Holiday Marketplace at Stewart's Creek High School will be held this coming Saturday, so come out and support their efforts.
And Commissioner Johnson.
I'd like to be excused for a few minutes to make sure Commissioner Cook got to her vehicle okay.
Oh, okay, yes, sir. Any other announcements? If not, we're going to give you a five-minute break here, and Mr. Reed has something else he wants to announce first, so excuse me.
I want to make sure we do not overlook the diamond on the western horizon, the city of Iggleville. They'll be having their Christmas parade December 9th, and want to invite everybody to come out. It's at 11:00 there at the city of Iggleville, an opportunity to come out and see a lot of individuals, a lot of celebrities, even Mayor Burgess will be in that parade. So we want people to come out and be a part of that in Iggleville.
All right, without objection then, you may be at ease for just a moment. We're not going to go off the air, so hold down your discussion just a little bit, but I think in fairness to everyone, we'll stay with our plan of our 6:30 public hearings Yeah, just go ahead and, go ahead and...
Good evening, Mayor Burgess and Commission. Hope everybody's doing well today. We have two rezoning applications for your consideration tonight. The first one is for property located at the intersection of Versales and Concord Road. The applicant who's present proposes to utilize the property in a manner similar to what it was used for in the past, namely, a neighborhood store. The applicant has provided a description of the store that's in your agenda materials. I won't go into that. You can, you can read that. But essentially, what he's asking for again is to just use the property in a manner to which it was used historically. The applicant has submitted a layout of the subject property, which is also included in your agenda packets, which is on your iPad. The structure where the market will be housed is in existence currently. The existing structure is non-conforming due to the location within the required setbacks. However, that's going to remain the case regardless if it's zoned RM, which it's zoned today, residential medium density, or if it's rezoned commercial neighborhood. Actually, the commercial neighborhood allows for a smaller front setback, so it'll actually be in more conformance than it is currently. Commercial neighborhood also allows for a... Commercial neighborhood also allows for residential uses as well as commercial uses, which are at a more neighborhood-type scale. The county zoning ordinance has three different commercial classifications, being commercial neighborhood, commercial services, and commercial general. This is the most restrictive of the three, and again, does also allow for residential uses on the property. There wasn't very much discussion on this item at the planning commission's meeting. There were some questions of the applicant regarding his plans to zone the entire property as opposed to just a portion of it. The applicant explained that from time to time, they may use the existing gravel parking toward the back of the property for special events or anything on the property. So after his explanation, the planning commission did recommend approval. The request was for a unanimous vote, eight, four, and zero against, and there was one abstention. With that, again, the applicant is present, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Do you have any questions of Mr. Demosi? All right then, please stand by. We will declare this rezoning request 17-8025. The public hearing for that request is open. If there's anyone here that wishes to speak for or against that application now is your opportunity, and you can come forward and give us your name and address. Is anyone that wishes to speak? Please rise and do that, please. Okay, there's one person coming forward, I believe.
Good evening. My name is Eddie Makin, and I reside at 9970 Concord Road. My family and I both reside there. I've owned that piece of property since 1996. I built my retirement home there in 2010, and actually moved in in 2011. I'm standing here tonight in full support of the request for the rezoning. I think there's just a significant opportunity to make use of this historical area, this historical store. I don't know if you, anyone has had the opportunity to see the inside of the store, but it's been refurbished and it's absolutely beautiful. It competes with what you would see cracker barrel-type atmosphere on the inside, and it offers all kinds of opportunity for whether a store, or maybe even a small restaurant at some point, like Miller's Grocery or something in that area. I have known the owners of that property since 1996. They are very, they keep care of everything, they're very good stewards of their property, even to the point it makes me feel embarrassed sometimes how well they care for theirs versus mine. So again, I am full support of this request.
All right, thank you. If anyone else wishes to speak, please come forward. Give us your name and address again, please.
Name's Ron Williams. I live at 11090 Versailles Road, and I'm the closest house and resident to this piece of property there. My house sits maybe 150 feet from the store. And a little history on the store is, I mean, it's, there was a store there that goes all the way back for, I'll think, all the way into the 1700s, late 1700s and 1800s, it's when it was called Versailles. But this particular store was put down there and has been operational for a good number of years. I grew up there, grew up about a mile away, rode my bike, walked there to this old, to this old store. And Jim and Ruth Carlton ran this store all during my childhood and stuff, and they had put up, they were a very good neighborhood influence, very good neighborhood thing, and I'm seeing that this might be something that would come back for that. So I'm in full support, even though I'm going to be able to hear all the car doors open and close and all of that. I would hope that y'all would support this. The Ruth Carlton that ran the store had some really good food, and she took care of all of the kids in the neighborhood, whether they misbehaved or not. So I'm looking forward to that type of venue coming back, and I know that Brett and Eddie do a good job on that, so hope that y'all would support that. My problem with it is that I don't need another place to go eat.
All right, is there anyone else that wishes to speak? I don't see anyone else coming forward, so that being the case, we'll declare the public hearing closed. And do we have a motion on this request? All right, do we have a second? Commissioner Dodd, any further discussion or comments? Mr. Reed.
Mr. Chairman, I will be abstaining from my vote on this, and there are a particular reason, the same reason that I did in the planning commission. I am part of the family, the Nance family in this. As I told the planning commission back there, when you, when all the families in that area right there show up at the same time in the 1800s, we not only don't have family trees, we primarily have family bushes around there, where everybody's kin. And with Brett and Nance right there, we're double cousins. I'm kin to both his mother and father out there. So rather than causing conflict to this applicant, I'd rather abstain from my vote right there. But as former Commissioner Williams has said there, there's a lot of history to this building right there, dating back to when French trappers come down from Canada and began trading with Native Americans there. And it is a very important part to that community back there, and we're very excited about the fact of what's been done there and their restoration of that building. And I just want to give my congratulations and for their ability of that family to maintain this store. It goes all the way back to the early 1800s. That family has maintained this store. Lot of history there. In fact, Tennessee 28th Tennessee Company C was formed under the trees in front of this store, marched off to the Battle of Stones River, Chigamaga, Shiloh, and Atlanta. So it has a lot of history that comes to this particular spot, and we congratulate those individuals for bringing it back.
Thank you very much. All right, we have a motion, a second, any other comments or discussion? If not, you're ready to vote? Everyone in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Next, we have rezoning request 17-8026. The applicant is Sims Commercial Realtors and Auctioneers, Mr. Larry Sims. And this property is located at 301 Double Springs Road. The existing zoning is residential medium density. The proposed zoning is commercial general on a site of about two acres. So Mr. Demosi, you may tell us a bit more about this.
Yes, Mayor Burgess, thank you. Our final public hearing tonight is stated is located at the intersection of Double Springs and John Bragg Highway. The applicant's proposing to zone the property for speculative purposes. When the applicant first approached staff, he asked for light industrial zoning. After considering one of the potential uses identified by the applicant, which was a community assembly-type use, staff recommended one of the commercial zones as opposed to the light industrial zoning, as LI zoning would only allow that type of use by special exception to the Board of Zoning Appeals. Small and medium community assembly uses, which is up to 500 people, are allowed by right into commercial zones, the CG, commercial general, and the commercial services zone. And large community, anything above 500, is allowed by special exception in that zone. And also, staff was not comfortable with any type of industrial zoning on this particular property. There is an existing single-family structure on this property. Zoning this property to commercial general would render the use as a non-conforming or grandfathered use. As long as the single-family use is not discontinued for longer than 30 months, it can continue based on the non-conforming regulations located in Chapter 13 of our zoning ordinance, and that would include transfer of property, selling it, leasing, anything like that, as long as the use continued. Again, there was some discussion from the planning commission on this particular application, particularly on the applicant's concept plan, which is included with your agenda packets. You can take a look at that on your iPads. Overall, staff did recommend approval of this. Commercial zoning is located within the city limits of Murfreesboro, just about 700 feet to the west of the subject property. John Bragg's also a major four-lane arterial that carries over 14,000 vehicles per day, and staff doesn't realistically think that this is going to develop long-term as a single-family type use. So after that discussion, the planning commission did recommend approval by a unanimous vote, and I'll be happy to answer any questions, and the applicant is present.
Any questions for Mr. Demosi?
Maybe I didn't hear you correctly, but on the iPad here, I'm showing a motion to recommend denial, and that the applicant had. Okay, I'm looking at the wrong one.
Oh, yeah, that's the third one. I'm sorry, yeah, that was, that's the one that's not coming tonight.
All right. Thank you, then. Therefore, we're ready to have this public hearing, so if anyone's here that wishes to speak for or against this rezoning request 17-826, now's your opportunity to come forward and give us your name and address and make your comments. So we'll declare the public hearing open for comments. Okay, we have one person coming here.
Mr. Larry Sims. I live at 537 East Main Street. I've been there several years, and I've done a lot in the community. I enjoy doing things. I'm kind of, use the motto, "We make things happen," and I believe in doing that. I saw this property about eight or nine years ago and saw the opportunity that you could do with the property. We've been kind of sitting on it, we've been renting out, I represent some investors. So I thought it was probably the proper time maybe to bring something and see if we could move forward and try to accomplish something. One of the things that we're trying to do here, even though we've got just a small concept plan of what we're talking about, my group's not in a hurry. They'd like to plan something even larger, sometimes might take more property in that come back that y'all would really like. So we'd like to maybe move with the zoning, start the communications back and forth or whatever, if you can do. We're somewhat limited because there's no sewer out there. I found out a long time ago, there's a lot of potential even use a septic system versus a city sewer. If you go to Parker Square, just Smyrna on the right, Charlie Fair, I worked with him, it used to be an old rest track, and I found out, and I helped convince Charlie to buy that property, and all that buildings over there, it's about eight buildings, it's probably about 25, 30, 40,000 square foot of buildings, that is built on a three-bedroom perk site. It's one of the first ones in the state of Tennessee. They followed it, they looked at it. So I found out back a long time ago, you don't have to have sewer to do a very nice development. And you're not going to get sewer out there for quite some time. We know the sewer's going to eventually come off of Halls Hill Pike, where the pumping station is, comes down Lidle Creek, and then it hits this property here. I can't see that happening anytime soon, it'd be very expensive. But we do have some good alternatives through just doing a regular septic system, and I can bring that to light for you. We know there's quite a few property out there, the VFW had a 10-acre tract, and I sold it to Charlie Fair, that can be brought in because it doesn't have a perk site on it. So what I'm looking at is trying to get the zoning done, and not only that, maybe move forward with this property, but maybe look at a larger development where I can get back with the county and look at the potential, and I think you'd like to see what's going. And we already know things are pushing out in that direction, you've already seen it. Every time I drive down John Bragg Highway, I'm always shocked to see what else is going on. So anyway, I'm just trying to open a door to make things happen, to make y'all happy, and I think it's a great opportunity for Rutherford County to move forward with a good development. If you have any questions, I'd be glad to try to answer them.
All right, thank you, Mr. Sims.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Anyone else wishes to speak regarding this rezoning request? Okay, I don't see anyone else choosing to come forward, so we'll declare the public hearing closed. And do we have a motion concerning rezoning request 17-826? Commissioner Serino. All right, and we need a second. Commissioner Gooch, questions or discussions further? If not, all of you in favor, that then, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any opposed? All right, that's unanimous. Ladies and gentlemen, that has completed our agenda. Does anyone have any additional other business? If, well, let's ask Lisa, tell the whole group about the bond issue. The Budget Committee has heard about that, but you might want to tell them the good news there.
We sold bonds, and we had several, let's see, two, four, six, eight, nine bidders, and it was sold to Massaro, I hope I pronounced that correctly, Financial at 2.67.
Hey, that was a very good, very good rate. All right, so that's the good news of the night, and I guess we can end on that good news. Thank you very much, we appreciate your participation. We are adjourned.